Would you pray with me tonight, please? Lord, quiet our minds. Help us to reflect on who you are and what you've done for us tonight. We need you in a special way. And we thank you for the blessings of this beautiful day. Your grace and your love flows every day, and we take it for granted. Forgive us of our attitude sometimes that does not reflect what we think of others and what we want to do in worshiping you. Be with us tonight in a special way. Pray for the...we pray for our friends in Louisville tonight. God help us to be a neighbor that cares, that'll go the extra mile, that'll watch out for the children in our neighborhood. We do not live alone. We are responsible. We thank you, Lord, that you've made that possible through the gift of your son, Jesus. Be with us. Thank you for our town. Thank you for the good things we see happening. Many little things are blessed in our hearts. Continue to do that through work and faithfulness in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman Norris. I will now ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Benell.
Present.
Guns.
Yes, ma'am.
Kirkpatrick.
Yes, ma'am.
Lowry.
Yes.
Marion.
Yes, ma'am.
Neal.
Here.
Norris.
Here.
Trigg.
Yes, ma'am.
Witcher.
Here.
All right, we have easily a quorum. Thank you all for being here and for being punctual, and we'll move forward with the things we need to deal with tonight. First of all, we need to approve the agenda that you got Thursday evening. I'll entertain a motion that we move forward with tonight's meeting as the agenda was presented.
Motion, Lowry.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor of moving forward indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Our agenda is approved for tonight. Now, we need to go back and look on the night of March the 27th. You had in your packet the minutes as were presented from that meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve those meeting minutes.
Motion, Kirkpatrick.
All right, is there a second?
Second by Benell.
Okay. Any discussion of those minutes? All right, I'll call the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. The minutes of the March 27th meeting are approved. Now, let's...next thing I want to do is, we've got two really good things to hear about tonight. I don't know...Joe, do you want a few extra minutes? Let me just let Eddie go first?
If you don't care to, that'd be great.
Okay, I'll be good, because we...I can say we want to, and Jeff Reed is over there.
I apologize, I told Joe the city council meeting started at seven.
Yeah?
I realized you changed to six.
All right, that's right. Well, you don't think he'll be mad about that, do you?
No. I've never seen Joe mad.
No, no, I haven't either, so I think that's good. But we'll have a really good report, a lot of good things going on at the Water Company, a lot of good things going on with the Recreation Department. That's the reason why I remember very well when Councilman Trigg says, "Just keep giving us updates on things," and we've taken that to heart. And there's some things that we need to hear about that's going on with Parks and Recreation. So Eddie, for long, I'll let you take off.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a lot going on, as the mayor said, so if you weren't aware, we had our Easter egg hunt this past Saturday. We had...I don't know the number of people that we had. It was easily over a thousand. We had 12,000-plus eggs that were put out, and literally in a couple of minutes, all those eggs were gone. It took us way longer to put them out than it did for the kids to pick them up. We had a nice little guest as our Easter bunny. There is a picture that's going to be posted on Facebook later today if it hasn't already made its way there. There...it was a council member, yes, you are correct. I won't say who it was, but somewhere in this room.
You're making direct eye contact, apparently.
But it was a great event. The weather could have been better, but it wasn't as bad as what they initially thought it was going to be.
It was quite warm. Sorry, we're...
There's a clue for you.
On top of the Easter program, we have our spring soccer that's getting ready to kick off. We have 360 kids in that program. There's 27 teams. It's not the biggest league we've had so far, but it rivals right up there. Also, our day camp program, signups start today, and I looked before I left this afternoon, and three of the sessions are already over halfway full. So that usually goes pretty quick. Chastity can attest to that. She's had her boys in there over the years. Next thing to talk about, the bathrooms are getting closer. I met with our contractor last week, and we have a game plan to finish out the remaining part of the restrooms. They are all under roof now. There are doors on the bathrooms. The next part is to hook up the plumbing from the meters to the buildings and then do some concrete work out front to finish everything off. Don't know the exact timeframe, but I would guess within the next month to be completely Playground at Beaver Trail continues to be a huge success after the Easter egg hunt. I don't know if anybody...I don't know if you looked out there, Chastity. It was completely packed that afternoon and continues to be that way every day. Richardson Stadium, so as of today, the lights are fixed. Not 100% fixed, but they are fixed. So Glasgow High School will play game...their game tomorrow night. We are still doing some preliminary...not preliminary, we're still doing some extra work on the lights. We have another electrician coming in tomorrow to hopefully help us finish that project and get everything where it needs to be. But it's just one light pole that we're having issues with. That's the issue. And then the last thing I have to talk about, the mayor and I met with Branstad or Carroll last week, and it was a very good meeting. They had some preliminary designs for us to look at. We are going to be getting together with the Parks Committee the end of this month or the 1st of May to have another meeting with them where they're going to bring in the colored designs, if you will, and some numbers and stuff like that. So we're super excited about that and just can't wait for it to happen. It's not going to happen as soon as we hoped, just based on talking with them. It's probably a 12 to 18-month project, I think, right, Mayor? Just based on how everything is across the world right now with shipping and stuff. So that's basically what I had.
Eddie, you might have said this. I think you did, but I've forgotten, and I have been asked, will the city pool be open this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, it will be open.
We actually, in our conversation with Branstad or Carroll, Eddie and I both looked at the guy and says, "Okay, so what day can we close the pool so you can get started on the new one?" And he laughed like y'all aren't being realistic on how much time this is going to take. But we're excited about having the pool open and excited about having some renderings out there for what the new facility is going to look like so we can ramp it up during the construction. But it really is going to be something really kind of special, for sure.
Yeah, just in the preliminary discussions, it looks like we'll be able to operate 100% this summer. And even if they are able to get started while we are open, it won't affect what's happening at the pool. So that's fingers crossed, knock on wood, do a little dance, say a prayer. That's what we're looking at.
And I love the comment from people in the public. They drive out by Beaver Trail, say, "What's going on over there, anyway? It's just that everybody's at the playground." And that's kind of a neat thing to hear a reflection on, you know?
Yeah. We've had nothing but positive comments about that. I've been super happy with that.
Right, well, we all going to be at a ballgame tomorrow afternoon about this time. And...
Yeah, I mean, all of our playgrounds have been renovated now over the last 24 months, but the one at Beaver Trail is...it's the cream of the crop. Yeah, it's the monster. Yeah, it's the destination playground, for sure.
Eddie, thank you for that update, because people are really interested, because, you know, planning on, as we get closer to school, being out, planning on activities for the kids. And you told me that your camps are really getting full.
Yeah, so I looked earlier. We have seven different weeks during the summer that we take kids, and the three weeks that are in July, they're already half-full. I know we take 20 per week, just based on the size of our building that we have, and all three of those had 13, 14, or 15 in each one. And today's the first day of signups.
Well, that's tremendous.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Thank you, and thank all of your folks. Anybody got questions?
One more question. On Rich and Field, the bathrooms, that we still got one out there. Where will that...will we catch that up, like at our meeting? Like what the progress of Rich and Field and building the stadium, or...
We will. I mean, I can talk about it now. So the mayor and I met with Benton Fudge. It's a...I don't know what the name of his company is, but that's the gentleman's name. We have hired them to kind of help design that, so we are in the early stages of the design part of Richardson. And the bathrooms will be part of that.
Yeah, there's a lot of...from a capacity standpoint, you've got to think about how many people you want to seat, and then everything else blossoms out from that. The size of the bathroom is directly related to the number of seats that you build the stadium for, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, there's a whole lot of groundwork to be laid for that in order to move forward with it.
Yeah, what we had to do, Patrick, just to kind of give you some more insight, we had to hire a structural engineer to help with this design, and that was part of the requirements from our insurance company.
Eddie, how's the staffing now?
Staffing? We are still short. Currently, we are down one recreation supervisor and one maintenance position. We do have a lot of applicants that we're trying to get in for interviews, but so far, we've interviewed probably four or five people for both those positions, but we're still looking. There's a lot of good candidates if they actually come in and do the interview process.
What about lifeguards and scorekeepers?
We're currently taking those applications as well. We haven't actually gone through them too much, because it just started, but I have seen a bunch of them come in so far. Yeah, we're receiving more applicants this time of the year than we have probably ever, and a lot of that has to do with us going online with applications.
Good discussion, too, good questions, and certainly everybody's interested, and good answers, I might add, too.
Thank you.
Lots of positive things going on. Thank you. Appreciate that, Eddie. And Eddie's easy to access as well. If you had a question, you know, he's always responsive and should be able to answer the questions that you may have. Now, I want to move to our next presenter. This is, I think...I think, Joe, this is Joe Solo.
Yes.
He was here last year, I think, but, you know, the law requires for each city department to give an annual report of their activities. So as a part of that, the director of each of our departments comes forward and gives that report. So last year, Joe was on board, but Scott Young kind of helped him through that report. This year, he is, as I say, soloing, and it's time for our report from the Glasgow Water Company. I don't know if you've had a chance to meet Joe Watson, but Joe is a tremendous leader at the Glasgow Water Company. Glasgow Water Company is one of our proud departments that does so much for the community, and it's a big operation over there, let me tell you. And I'm just really anxious for you all to hear Joe's presentation after the first full year. You get to come over here and brag on yourself a little bit, Joe. We're looking forward to hearing about what you have going on this year in the Glasgow Water Company report.
Hopefully, this goes better than starting off did. I apologize for being late. I thought...Jeth and I talked earlier, and we thought it was seven o'clock, so I do apologize for that. It's a good thing Mayor Royce gave me a call.
Hey, you know.
Showed up at seven o'clock. So we'll go ahead and get started. Jeth's kind of passed out the presentation slides, so you all can follow along there or look on the screen, whichever you want to do. Well, what a lot of people don't realize is we are the 10th largest water utility in the state as far as volume produced, and there's 435 water utilities in the state of Kentucky. And I've listed the top 10. Obviously, you can see you've got Louisville, Kentucky American Water, which is basic...which is Lexington, and then Northern Kentucky, Owensboro. You can kind of see the list, but we are number 10 as far as volume produced. And one reason for that is we have a 444-square-mile service area, and as part of that service area, we wholesale water to Allen County and to Edmonton County...or Metcalf County, sorry. So once you count those customers, that's the reason we produce so much volume. As far as our own customers, we have 20,400 water customers, and we treat annually 3.1 billion gallons of water annually. And as I mentioned, we wholesale to five surrounding utilities, which are Edmonton Water Works, Metcalf County, Allen County Water District, Fountain Run Water District, Cape Land Environmental Authority, and Green River Valley District. So once you include all those people, we serve approximately 90,000 people in our area. So it's not just the Barron County area. We're kind of a regional water supplier. And we also do sewer, too. It's not just water. We have 70...approximately 7,400 sewer customer connections, and most of that's within the city limits. We do have a forest main connection going out to the state park at Barron River Lake. We collect sewer from there, but majority of our customers are within the city limits. And our sewer plant treats 1.1 billion gallons of water annually also. And to kind of give perspective, we have 903 miles of water mains, and we've got 153 miles of sewer mains. So once you add all that up, that's about 1,056 miles, which would stretch from here all the way to Colorado. And that's kind of crazy to think about, once you think about how much mileage of water lines and sewer lines we have in the ground that we have to take care of. As far as our operating and capital budget this year for 2022-23, it's 17.9 million. That's a little bit higher than usual, because we've got a capital improvement project that's pretty robust this year, because we're trying to build out...bid out the next phase of transmission line. I'll get into that a little bit later. But so it's usually around 14 million, 13, 14 million, but it's a little higher because of that capital improvement project that we're...that I'll get into later. We currently have 58 employees, and that's broken down into 52 full-time, six part-time employees. Approximately half of our workforce has a technical college degree, which, I mean, if you look at...I'd say most of the guys at the water treatment plant, they've either got a biology degree, a chemistry degree, or an environmental science degree. So there's a lot of technical people. We've got a microbiology lab at the water treatment plant. A lot of people don't realize, and that's a state-certified microbiology lab, so people don't realize we have all that. And our workforce, if you kind of take all the years of service and add it together, we have 640 years of service experience, once you add all the employees together. And then speaking of employees, well, I'll go ahead and...as far as our mission, our mission statement is to provide the highest quality water and wastewater services at the lowest possible cost while continuing our commitment to meet the needs of today's customers as well as future generations. And as far as that lowest possible cost, I'll get into that a little bit later on, so you can see what our rates are compared to surrounding the surrounding area. But none of this wouldn't be possible without any of our employees. As I mentioned, we've got 58 employees, and Jeff and Scott have done a tremendous job for the past 16 years building up our workforce. When you think of dedication, what's a good definition of dedication? So I Googled it just out of curiosity to see what Google said. It said, "The willingness to give a lot of time and energy to something because it is important." Well, what's something that could be more important than providing drinking water to people? Because that's one of the most important things in our lives. You've got to have water to be able to take a shower, to cook with, to drink, so...and to put that in perspective, back during the winter storm, this happened during Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, and the day after Christmas. We had 719 hours of overtime. People don't realize that, but we worked around the clock during that winter storm, and that constituted...we had 133 service calls to turn off water meters. We had about 20 water main breaks. In addition to that, you think, a lot of people are kind of letting their faucets drip and everything to make sure the water lines didn't freeze. Well, you take 90,000 people doing that. That adds up a lot to how much water we have to produce. So we were running wide open at Lucas as far as the amount of water we were producing, and also at Beaver Creek. For example, our Lucas Water Treatment Plant is rated at 12 million gallons per day, and then Beaver Creek's rated at 2.5 million gallons per day. Lucas, we pushed out at 11 million gallons that day or during...per day during that time, and then at Beaver, we pushed out the 2.5. So we were more or less just about maxed out on what we could produce by supplying Allen County, keeping everybody in water, and keeping all of our customers in water. People don't realize the commitment that our staff has. And then like the spring windstorm that we had, that the electric companies were dealing with, we had a...we donated 160...we had 165 hours where we helped out the electric companies, because we've got large excavators and everything, where we would help them clear the right-of-way, just so they could get to their power poles, because they don't...sometimes they may not have the equipment that we've got. They've just got chainsaws a lot of times, but we've got these big excavators that can help that. In addition to that, our water plant was without power for two days. And when you think about that, we've got three diesel generators at the water plant, and our big main diesel generator, it burns about...it was burning about 50 gallons per hour. So you can imagine how much fuel we were going through and having truck fuel down there to keep those generators going and keeping everybody in water without any interruption. So I need to give our staff major props for doing all this during the winter storm, especially when you think about that was Christmas Eve, Christmas Day. They missed a lot of time with their family, keeping everybody in water during that time, and then also the spring windstorm that we had to deal with. And here's an example. I mean, you can see the conditions. This was sometime last summer. You can kind of see the conditions they have to deal with sometimes, where they have to jump in a hole of water to get something fixed. And you can think, if you're trying to do that when it's 20 below, like it was during the winter storm, that's a whole different animal. As far as our regulatory structure, we've got all kinds of...we've got the Safe Drinking Water Act, the National Primary Drinking Water Regulation, the UCMR, which is a contaminant monitoring rule that we have to abide by. You've got the lead and copper rule revision, which I'll get into a little bit later, and then you've got the NPDS permit, the Significant Industrial User Permit Pretreatment, which program that we do in-house. CMOM, we do that in-house. We've got a risk management plan that we had to put together. We had a risk and resiliency assessment that we had to do. And like that risk management plan and that risk and resiliency assessment, all that comes in handy, like when, for example, during the spring windstorm, when we were without power for two days, we kind of identify what are some of our vulnerabilities, what can we do to make sure we keep everybody with water. And that's when you buy generators and everything else for that situation. Then we've also got an emergency response plan. And then as far as how we're governed, obviously, we've got a Board of Commissioners that we... they're appointed by the mayor, and then the mayor's on our board, and then the city council representative is also...member is also on our board. And then we're regulated by the Division of Water and the EPA, and then also as far as the Public Service Commission, the Kentucky Public Service Commission. If we look at changing our wholesale rates, we're regulated by them. They don't really regulate us until we get into wholesale rates, because we're a municipality. And I know there's a lot of questions during the Palestine train derailment, and we felt a lot of...we felt a lot of questions during that time. So I just threw this slide in there. That red area, that's kind of all the streams that feed Barron River Lake. So when...we told a lot of people that that didn't happen within our watershed. So what that means is if water...if it rains during that kind of circular area, that's what will flow into Barron River Lake where we get our water from. So that's just kind of perspective of how far away that would be from the East Palestine train derailment. As far as our capital improvement plan, you can see we had $7.3 million allocated for it, and the big portion of that's the water distribution system, where 6.6 million was allocated. And a lot of that was the next phase...there's two big projects on there. There's the next phase of transmission line, Phase 5, which we're currently...currently we've already got designed. We're going through permitting now, planning to put that out to bid in the next couple of months. But that's probably about $4 million, and then we've got a water tank tower that we're working on over at Burt's Hill Road. It's about $1.1 million of that. So that's the bulk of what that capital improvement plan is. And then like at Barron River Lake Treatment Plant, we are doing a filter gallery rehab project, and that's about $200,000. So that's kind of the bulk of where that money's coming from as far as our capital improvement plan for this fiscal year. And as far as you kind of look down the road, kind of thinking during a 20-year plan, what things we need...there's some things we know we need, like a new elevated water tank. We know we're going to have to expand the water treatment plant in the future, and we're...right now, we've got Cannon and Cannon engaged to help us do a master plan so we can plan smartly for the next 20 years. And they're working on that, and that's one of the good things about our rates being so low because of the amount of money it's going to cost to expand the water treatment plan. It's not a cheap endeavor. So that's the good thing about us being where we are with our rates. We'll be able to handle that once we get to that point. But that's the whole point, we're doing a master plan, make sure we spend our money wisely. We don't want to go out there, build something, and it not work five years down the road. So we're trying to do it the smart way. You can kind of see about $120 million roughly, once you think through it, as far as the water treatment plant, upgrades to the distribution system. But this is kind of a 20-year plan, and once we get done with the master plan, this will be updated with a lot more detail. And as far as the transmission line that I talked about, we've... And that's one of the good things about our rates being so low because of the amount of money it's going to cost to expand the water treatment plant, it's not a cheap endeavor. So that's a good thing about us being where we are with our rates, we'll be able to handle that once we get to that point. But that's the whole point, we're doing a master plan, make sure we spend our money wisely. We don't want to go out there, build something, and it not work five years down the road. So we're trying to do it smartly. You can kind of see about 120 million dollars roughly, once you think through it, as far as the water treatment plant, upgrades to the distribution system, but this is kind of a 20-year plan, and once we get done with the master plan, this will be updated with a lot more detail. And as far as the transmission line that I talked about, we've installed nine miles, because what this boils down to is, the original transmission line into town was built in 1965 when the water plant was built. So Scott and everybody correctly surmised, like if we had a break on that line, then town would be without water. So they devised a plan to get a redundant feed into town, so they've been working on it over the past couple of years. You can kind of see, we've completed nine miles of it, and we're working on the next phase of it, and that'll get us underneath the parkway, this next phase of it. So that's Phase 5. So that'll get us on the parkway, and then 6 will get us to our lot that we have on Grand View Avenue, and then we'll size a tank and build a new tank. As far as the lead and copper rule revision, what that is, is there's always been a lead and copper rule, and then they came out with a lead and copper rule revision. And that was developed to make sure there's no more instances like Flint, Michigan. It's to eliminate the chance of lead exposure to anyone drinking tap water. So as part of that, you've got to go through and identify all your service lines. So when you think about what we talked about earlier, we've got 20,400 customers, that's a lot of service lines that you have to go through and identify if you don't have any records on that. So we've kind of gone through, and we don't, we have to turn that report in in October of '24, and we're working through it. As you can kind of see in that bottom right-hand corner, we've developed our own GIS dashboard where we input our data, and from that 20,400, we've only got 9,900 more that we've got to identify, which we're in pretty good shape considering we've got until October of next year to get that finalized. And as of right now, we haven't found any lead service lines, and we don't anticipate finding any, but you've got to go through and prove it to everybody that you don't have any, so we're in good shape on that. As far as our rate detail, as I mentioned earlier, this is a rate study that was done last year by Cannon and Cannon, and this is a map of Kentucky, and it's showing the different area development districts, and we're in the Barron River Ad District, and that's kind of the orangish color down there. And the average cost in Kentucky for 5,000 gallons is $44.55. And this was based on, I think they interviewed or surveyed 303 water utilities. And the city rate for Glasgow Water Company is 21.72, and then the county rate is 27.27. So, and then if you look at the Barron River area ad district, you can kind of see, best this is all of our surrounding areas, we're the lowest one in our area, even when you include Bowling Green and Warren County Water. So that's a, that's a good thing. It gives us room to expand in the future if we have to do with the plant expansion. And same thing for sewer. The average sewer cost based on 5,000 gallons is 46.60. For the city sewer, it's 26.88, and for the county sewer, it's 30.84. And again, if you look at the Barron River Ad District, for the sewer rate, we are the second lowest. We weren't the lowest. Franklin Water and Sewer was a little bit cheaper, but they were at 24.49, and we're at 26.88. So I mean, we're right there being the cheapest. And you all, and this was including the rate authorization that we got last year per the city ordinance of 223006, where you've authorized us on an annual basis to increase our retail water and sewer rates up to 3% for the next five years. So that's included in that number, so even with that rate increase, we're still the lowest. As far as our accomplishments, we've got a bunch of accomplishments. And that's because, like I talked about earlier, all of our dedicated staff and all of the chemistry biology degrees that our guys have on staff, that's how you get these awards. And we're, I think this is 17th year in a row that we've got AWAP, which is the turbidity measurement of water. The state requires it to be .3 NTU, and AWAP requires it to be .1, and we've met that 17 years in a row. And that costs us a lot of extra money to do it, but we feel like it's worth the extra money to meet AWAP and be able to say we're AWAP certified. Does anybody have any questions or anything?
Questions for Joe? This is a very impressive presentation, Joe, let me tell you.
Even family?
Yeah, Joe, thank you very much for presenting that, not only to us, but to the citizens at home that are watching, too. Very knowledgeable.
Again, I apologize for being late, that's completely my fault. I apologize. Better late than never.
Joe, do you have a date on the redundant line when you finish that up?
Right now, we are permitting it, it's, we're going through Division of Water as far as permitting, so once we get the permit approval, we'll be putting it out to bid. So we're thinking, we intend to bid it this summer, and once we get it out to bid, they'll start on it as soon as they get materials in, so. I don't know how long it'll take, and a lot of it will kind of depend on how long it'll take to get material in, because as with everything else, material shortage is a big thing. So it'll kind of depend on that. Hope to have it done this year.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Joe? Very, very good presentation. You know, it's interesting because from this vantage point, you see all the different things the water company brings to the table, not just a fresh glass of water to your house, but when we have industrial prospects here, they really want to talk about sewage capacity, they really want to talk about the size of water mains, things of that nature, and all the staff up there at the water company are very knowledgeable and very helpful, and they make a very impressive presentation when industrial prospects come and want to know where we are. They're always very impressed, and I thank you for that and all the efforts you all put into it.
Yeah, like I said, Jeff and Scott did a tremendous job the past 16 years of building their staff and doing a great job of developing staff, so all I'm doing is just taking over from a great job they've done in the past.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation, Joe. And good questions, too. It's a big operation, no question about that. All right, so that takes care of our new business, or actually, our presentations. We don't have any old business, but we have to remind you about some items in your packet that for you to look over. We don't have to vote on these, but we have some executive orders updating the oath of office policy and some Glasgow Police Department standard operating procedures that have been updated, and this is information-only for you, there's no requirement for approval or whatever. I don't know if there's any, Major Flatt, I don't know if there's, would anybody have any questions about anything on these SOPs? I didn't want to put you on the spot, but everybody's had a chance to look at them. If there's anything you want to know about it, Major Flatt can either answer it or get you to answer one or the other. If there's any questions. All right? Yes, can you say something? Yes, Mona, you can.
What I did want to say was Executive Order Number 2023-250, which was an update, not really an update, but in the oath of office policy for the Glasgow Police Department. The reason we decided to go on and do this was Kentucky Department of Library and Archives added oath of office as a retention to keep permanently. So we felt that we needed to have that with their GPD and our Glasgow Fire Department as part of their policy. And also, whenever we swear in someone here, that now becomes something we have to keep permanently. So that's, I wanted to point that out.
I've already messed that up. The first police officer I swore in, I didn't have to get it signed. The second one I swore in, Mona was going crazy because I didn't bring it back to her sign. So I'm walking evidence that you got to follow those operating procedures. So we have it on there, and that's good. Thank you for bringing that up. Let me talk about a couple of things that are going on right here today. This is just for information only, we made two proclamations today. First of all, I went out to the Glasgow Police Department and declared it National Animal Control, Animal Control Officers Week. The people that are in our Animal Control Office were tickled that we're doing a whole week to honor them, and they were very pleased to be involved in that. At the same time, this is also the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and we went over to the 911 Dispatch Center, and we signed the paperwork and the proclamation, and they've got that, and they were all very proud because those are very hard-working people over there, for sure. They really appreciate the recognition.
Is that one for a week, Mayor?
Yes, both of them are this week, yes, uh-huh. Wednesday, and I was asked to just invite everybody, is the 100th birthday of Ed Faye Smith, and it's going to be out there at 201 Trista Lane, which I think is BHI, Assisted Living, and I'm going to take a proclamation out there. He's going to be proclaimed on his 100th birthday, which is going to be Wednesday, and they want to invite everybody out there to kind of make it special, in which I think that it will be. And that time is going to be at, gee, Joe, you ask hard questions. That's going to be 1:00 on Wednesday afternoon. And the last thing I want to remind you of about Sip, Shop &amp; Stroll in downtown Glasgow is going to be this Saturday. Now, it's hard to believe, they have 114 vendors who are going to be here set up on the square on what should be an absolutely gorgeous Saturday. And then about 4, it goes until 4:30, and that's when people start lining up to get in to see the first of two Chris Janson performances over at the Plaza Theater. So this is going to be one happening place here this weekend between Sip, Shop &amp; Stroll, and then, of course, the Plaza. So just, you know, pass that along to anybody that says they want to come down here, you know, just to come to a dead town and show them how wrong that they are, because we're going to be alive this weekend for sure.
Mayor, will you say that fast three times?
Sip, Shop &amp; Stroll? No, I won't. I'll abbreviate, but I have had to practice that for sure. Let's see, our next meeting is on April 24th, and I think that's all of my notes. Does anybody else need me to bring up anything else? Mona, anything else we need to talk about? All right, okay. Well, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion, Kirkpatrick.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Anybody want to discuss it? All in favor indicate by saying aye. All right. Thank you all for being here, and it was a nice meeting.